How are you?
I'm good, how are you?
All okay?
She's okay.
Yeah, she's not like that. And, uh, Lynn is awesome. We get all the things. Always, always. Sorry. I have a point of view. Of course, it's all about, uh, that's all. And, uh, it's about one of the, and I said, it was my home. Oh, yeah. Issues in this area. So, I said, we're talking about, this is what I'd say.
Oh, I.
And I think there's a, uh, I don't know. So, I can't get all, which is, I mean, there's, you know, I see you. It's kind of, it's kind of, it's all, uh, and like, far apart, like, uh, you know. You're also not, uh, you're holding on, uh, you're, uh, walking, yeah.
Lastly, I so appreciate how respectful she is to me and the other teachers in the school. A lot of kids fall short with that daily. I choose her to help me with jobs in the classroom because I know that I can trust her and she'll do an amazing job. Lastly, she doesn't know I'm reading this part. I added this part after some, actually some prayer before we came, so here we go. Don't worry, it's not embarrassing. Lastly, I'd like to share something that Mallory and I have in common that I have not told her about. I too struggled when I was in 4th grade when I was at North Webster Elementary. I didn't like school that much. I faked being sick sometimes so I could stay home. My little brother was starting kindergarten and he was getting all of the attention from my parents and my siblings, and they were all trying to help him and weren't paying much attention to me. I was pretty shy back then, and so my parents made me get on the bus. I just did the best I could even though I didn't feel very good about school. But then my 5th grade year came and I had a teacher, a reading teacher named Mr. Stewart. He was really funny and he made school a lot of fun. I've never forgot about Mr. Stewart. He made me look at school a whole different way. So I made it my goal to be like Mr. Stewart. Teach kids stuff, but develop relationships at the same time. Get to know them and maybe even make them laugh a little bit. It's been my pleasure to be Mallory's teacher and see her grow, not just academically, but as a person. And now I get to be like old Mr. Stewart and she gets to be like young Bill. She's now in my shoes, and Mallory, you do remind me a lot of me when I was a kid. I wish you the best in all that you choose to do in the future and in your life, and I want to thank her parents as well for all the communication the last couple of years between us. And they've always had kind words and spoken kindly to me, and I appreciate that. And I just want to congratulate Mallory Tackett. Good job, girl.
Congratulations, Mallory. And from Pearson Elementary nominated by Trenton Osborne, we have Reyna Landrigan.
All right, I have Ms. Reyna Landrigan, and what I wrote about Reyna is that Reyna Landrigan embodies what it means to be a Whitco Wildcat each day that she enters the classroom. She has a welcoming, warm smile for everyone and is not shy to give a heartfelt hug to her friends or other teachers. She puts her best effort into everything that she does. Reyna is always on task, and once she completes the task at hand, she is willing and ready to assist her classmates in also completing the same task. Reyna is kind, respectful, open-minded, and has a love for life that is contagious to everyone around her. I cannot think of a person more deserving of Student of the Month than Reyna Landrigan.
Congratulations, Reyna. We're going to move on to Headliners, and once we're done with Headliners, if you're Student of the Month and you want to leave, you're welcome to do so. So for tonight's Headliners, we want to acknowledge the Marching Pride, our Whitco Marching Pride, went to semi-state this past Saturday. Unfortunately, their run came to an end, but we are proud of the hard work and dedication they have put into this season and every season. Our FFA livestock team traveled to Pennsylvania. The team of Carly Shroff, Anna Sikafus, Cohen Shipper, and Lily Sikafus competed nationally at Keystone, Pennsylvania. Anna Sikafus placed 9th in Sheep, 8th in Swine, 2nd in Reasons, and was the top 4th place individual overall. The team was 4th in Reasons overall. Carly Shroff placed 5th in Reasons, and this team is coached by Carrie Jewellette. And in Orthopedic Opportunities, we recently had nearly 1,000 8th graders from Cassiasco County, which included students from Whitco, that were able to take part in a 3-day, multiple-location industry showcase that highlighted the career opportunities available through some of the area's orthopedic facilities. This was an exciting opportunity for our students to learn about the industry and if they choose to begin planning their educational pathways to become a successful part of the orthopedic world someday. That's Headliners for tonight. If you are Student of the Month and would like to leave, you're welcome to do so now. All right, we're going to move on to 3.0, which is our reports. Do we have a report tonight from Chris Evans, our curricular and top director? I don't see Chris.
I think he's uptown.
He's uptown. All right, we're going to move on to Mrs. Jamie Pano, our Director of Alternative Services.
Hello. We had our FSSA state licensing inspection today. We also had our state fire marshal inspection today. The fire marshal called me on his way in and said, "I will be there in 20 minutes." And I said, "Okay, FSSA is here as well," and so we made it happen. We passed the fire inspection with zero citations at all. And then the FSSA came in and they were blown away with our renovation idea with the current classrooms and with the forward focus mindset that Whitco has for early childhood education. We have a few small things that we were excited for. Minor things that Rhonda and I will be able to fix this week, and we'll have our license next week.
Wow.
So it's been a long journey, but I'm ecstatic. It's awesome. With the Whitco homeschool pathway, we have 37 active enrollments. IFSC is having at least 100 by the end of the year. It's gaining a lot of traction, and it's something that a lot of families are finding to be very, a great opportunity because they can participate in the hybrid experience, which allows them to come into the Career Academy and take their CTE classes or participate in extracurricular activities. It is open grant cycle for the Whitley County Community Foundation and the K-21 Foundation. I plan on working with foundations to implement STEM-related opportunities for all students pre-K through 12th grade. Any questions?
I have a quick question. Can you hear me? I just had a question about the fire inspection. Was that for the whole building or just little cats?
That was just for the Early Learning Center. And that did not include the renovations. We'll come back out when those are done, and those will be licensed separately under the same umbrella.
Thank you, Jen.
Thank you.
From Pearson Elementary, we have Kristi Hopper.
Good evening.
Evening.
The first thing I wanted to mention is Root and Ears is kind of the lead at Pearson. Our choice leader is D.H.E. Melas, writing for Paul Wrigg, and so Mary Hellingich was published in the newsletter for them this month, this past month. And they have a section called "The Big Fresh," and so she put a really outstanding article on craft moves for characters and how that really leads to reader engagement, so we were pretty pumped about that. And that was pretty cool to have a total shopper in our building. I included the link if you want to read it there. It was really, really good. Lots of things going on with, like some people mentioned, fire codes, school safety. We've been continuing to focus on just making sure that we have a good balance of, you know, meeting the kids' needs, but also not getting fined, so. So we're working with teachers to kind of slowly transition into that. Also looking at our Alice lockdown, where I was getting more training for our staff. That's what I've heard of that. Lots of like reading, seeing OPM books, and so I've been working with Justin and the other buildings to do that and making sure that we're off, so our language there. This is Pasima and Laura, color LTO, which is a really difficult last name, but our buildings together, 3-day planeterium or dideterium experience for all grade levels pre-K, pre-over, and they got to visit and do random experiences through the show classes. So that was pretty cool for students. They got an hour and learning about the planeterium system. Student Council is doing quite a bit with fundraising, trying to build up, I think they had maybe about $150 in their accounts, so they're doing some fundraising, community service with bulk jugs and Hollywood, and they're making a batch for South Willy. And I told Joel, "That'll be nice again in the batch since we have too many opera in our building." But also, we have parent-teacher conferences coming up, so we have one this Thursday night, and then also next Thursday, on the 1st Thursday of November. So that's going on. Upcoming clusters, we're doing a lot of equitable conferencing and early data, so trying to make sure that we're understanding the needs of all our students and how to recruit students for the best accommodations and instruction that we can provide in our reading program. Checking for reading accuracy, level accuracy, so we're really cross-conferencing for having teachers appear up and kind of double-check power screen in kids, so that's pretty cool. Also part of our character reading program, virtual coaching events that we're experiencing, we're working on formative assessment practices, working on student power goals and tracking what students are needing and understanding what those are. For ILT, we're doing learning blocks, so we've come up with a preliminary schedule for K-1, so we'll be doing our new standard focusing on some programming program from our literacy class.
Home Connect, or, oh gosh, Home Connect is also something that we're trying to push out basically information to parents about how they can work with their children in reading. So, you know, making sure that we celebrate their strengths, but also the areas of their weekend, how parents can support the tools that are available to them at home. The big thing for PTO is still our Fall Fest, and that's coming up pretty quick. So that's Saturday, November 4th, from 3:00 to 6:00 p.m. So we've kind of added some more activities to that since last, maybe I spoke about it. We have vendors with baked goods, we have pony rides, hay rides, so there'll be a lot going on in games, lots of games in the building. So I'm sure I will be experiencing lots of different things going on that Saturday. Robotics, so Ryan Oosley is one of our 6th grade teachers this year. He's new to Pearson, and he has experience with VEX robotics, and he's meticulously put together some things for that club. And it's been a little slow because he wanted to have it just right, but he's going to start practices here in the next week or so on Fridays. So he's including, I believe, grades 4 through 6 for that. And looking into competitions as well, which I think is pretty cool. He's been communicating with the high school and trying to figure out how to coordinate some competitions. We have PES awards coming up on November 8th, which include Honor Roll, High Honor, Pride of Pearson, and Great Growth Awards. And then we already did Student of the Month. Back to the reading program and Earl, some highlights. I want to say that especially our reading levels, meaning like students who are on grade level or above, so they're meeting their reading target in 4th, 5th, and 6th grade, is vastly approaching 50%, which I think is really great. I think that's a positive. We still have some work to do on the lower grades, but it's trending up, so that's really good. And also, right now about a third of our kids are highly engaged in reading, so we're practicing ways to make sure that we're mentoring them and really teaching the lower grades about not reading at a level when we screen them for the reading program while also in grades, so.
Thank you.
Thank you.
From South Willy Elementary, we have Mr. Joel Hall Sappel.
So I want to highlight a few things with our American Reading Company because we've spent quite a bit of money as a district in that, and we think it's going to make an impact, and it's already started. So power goals are being set, and those power goals let teachers know where students are at as readers. And it's not just their level, but some of the things that we're learning, those of us older teachers, we were always looking at their reading levels, but now we're looking at the skills they have to become better readers, which is something we didn't always have. So the power goals for at South Whitley, and I believe at Pearson also, we want all of our staff to have power goals set for students by October 30th, so that they have those set. And these are formative assessments that we use. So ILEARN for us is more of a summative. We get a grade, we get the score, and we can't always do anything with the data that we get. But the formative assessments we get with the power goals and the Earl's let us then make a move with our students to improve their reading, which is very important. We can react to that and we can make lessons. We're working on small group lesson plans, and we learned today that 4 is best for our students. You know, we used to, 6 was what we'd try and do. We know one-on-one's the best, but that's really hard to do with, you know, the number of kids that we have. We're assessing those skills roughly every 2 weeks, so we want kids to be fluid. We want them to be moving. Once they master a skill, then we move on to something else, so that we're always working at that progression of being a better reader. It's really neat that our special education teachers and our Title I teachers are able to use those power goals or those skills that our students need. They can use those, come in, give support, and then again, we can, all of those, the title teachers, special ed teachers, and the general education classroom teachers can all assess that and help our students to move. So it's not held in just one location like the teachers having it. One of the things that we're also going to be doing here in the future is we want the kids to read 30 minutes a night at home, which is going to be a little bit of a shift, reading at home. So we're starting that. We have conferences, like Kristi said, coming up this Thursday and then the following Thursday. And for us, we have the South Whitley Elementary Light, or not the South Whitley Elementary Library, but the South Whitley Public Library will be at South Whitley to try and sign people up for library cards to let them know what's available, just to know that that resource is available to the community. Some celebrations, so from staff, celebrations with the American Reading Company or ARC. Deeper understanding of students as readers, able to hone in on the students and know where to work with them, able to focus on the skills students need to read, and aligns with the science of reading, and we're learning against best practice. Some of the things that we're seeing from students, we had students who were hesitant readers or resistant because their books looked different. So if they weren't able to read as high a book, the book they were reading looked maybe younger and older. So we've got something that's called the ARC Bookshelf, and kids are able to read with books that they look similar. So students don't have to know where other students are. And then some of the assessments that we have the success, we have baselines, so we know where students are as readers, and we can keep pushing them on. Again, to inform our future instruction, which is so important, so. Any questions for me?
No, thank you.
Sounds good. Thank you. From the Whitco Career Academy, we have Chris Benedict.
Good evening. WCA is going to host the Don Wood Foundation Board of Directors on November 1st. A lot of the Wood Foundation has some new board members that weren't a part of the opening of WCA. Would like to come and tour the facility and learn more about our programming, obviously in precision machining, engineering, welding, manufacturing, and the business entrepreneurship side of it. So that'll be happening on November 1st. We're excited about that. Work-based learning student for October that we're highlighting is Traceen Bradley. Traceen is working at B&amp;E Computers, and he completed his cybersecurity pathway with Mr. Irwin. As you mentioned before, our FFA teams are starting their competition season. The next event would be November 1st through the 3rd in Indianapolis for the Nationals with our FFA meets team. Our criminal justice students are working with local law enforcement to present ideas for community-oriented policing to build positive relationships. I was able to go in class and listen to their presentations that they're going to present to local law enforcement in hopes to hopefully get one of those proposals in each semester to be able to participate in a hands-on activity with them. Could look like shops, shop with cops during the Christmas time, National Art Day, a talent show, an Italian food cook-off, volleyball tournament, ice cream social, and Halloween party where our students would also work hand-in-hand with Whitley County law enforcement officials to provide that opportunity for people to just kind of, again, build positive relationships. Our leadership team here at WCA is working on preparing documents for compliance that qualifies us for federal funding. One of those is our 30A report, which is about a 1,700, 1,800-row Excel spreadsheet with about 90 columns in it with each course and every student that goes through every single course, that allows us to get our CTE funding. So that's kind of a tedious process that we got to go through, but we're working on that. Phase 2 audit, as a new career center, we have not been audited yet through the Perkins funding and all of the national and federal funding that we get. So that is a process that we're currently going through that will be done and complete on October 31st. And then our CLNA, I talked a little bit about that the last time, that is us meeting with local businesses to make sure that we're making our programming compliant with the job market and what the needs are going to be in our communities in the future. Our business department has been working extremely hard to create some Whitco apparel. They're taking orders up until this Friday. Contact Mrs. Lindsay, actually Friday, October 27th. Contact Mrs. Lindsay with, if you would like to place an order on all of our, on the website as well as on all of our social media outlets as well. So you can find those at any of those places that order some Whitco apparel. Any other questions?
I do have a question.
Sure.
I've had a couple of folks contact me just questioning why we don't start and end our day here at the Career Academy. Could you maybe clarify why that would?
Well, as, I think, one of the only administrators that was here during the whole four-year process of that happening, the planning of that happened, obviously, the year prior. I think the number one reason, obviously, is a logistical nightmare in terms of trying to get students on Bus 218 in the morning, which one of you are coming to the academy, which one of you have classes at the high school. So all of our buses and transportation, from that standpoint, go to the junior, senior high school first. Every kid has a first-period class at the junior, senior high school, allows us to get attendance, to get everybody on board with attendance right off the bat in the morning. Very fortunate for our board, previous board and this board, previous superintendent and our superintendent, to understand the amount of opportunities this gives our students to have that transportation team with 4 shuttle buses to come out and bring students in the morning, transport them back for lunch, and then another group coming back out in the afternoon, transport them back to where, again, every bus in the corporation then that's leaving from the junior, senior high school has their routes that they're going off. So it would be very difficult in a transportation scenario to have, obviously, we cover 2 counties, to make sure that everybody on Bus 218 was going to go to the Career Academy in the morning first. So that's why we do that, and we have the eighth-period day for a reason. Again, we have the 4 core courses, math, social studies, English, science. We have 3 courses that they get out here at the academy. And then obviously, if you're a band or choir student, that gives you that eighth-period day. 40 minutes of class, it enables us, when they're out here, to maximize their time when they're out here, to get them a number of credits when they're out here. Most of them take 3 courses, some of them take 4 with our freshmen in order to get on the red day, blue day schedule. They get 4 classes, they kind of front-load that schedule. Serves a number of purposes. Number 1, it serves the purpose of Box 2 requirement for graduation. Every student gets that box checked their freshman year because it's all project-based learning out here. So that gets taken care of right off the bat. Box 3 for graduation requirements is if you don't have a qualifying score on an SAT, an ACT, or an ASVAB test, that you have to have 6 credited hours in a certain specific CTE pathway. And that enables our kids in order to get that process. Again, I think it all stems back to, honestly, the logistical nightmare of trying to get that all taken care of. So one of the buildings has to start a little earlier, the other building starts a little bit later to make that transportation possible. And again, I think I would want to just make sure that people understand the uniqueness of our building, the uniqueness and open-mindedness of our board and our administration and our superintendent to provide the number of opportunities our students get by the advent of this Career Academy being open. In tradition, we would have maybe 12 to 15 kids that went to Warsaw Career Center for those particular classes. We get every 7th grader, we get every 8th grader, we get every freshman. And we had, last year, we had 34 sophomore juniors that did not come out. And then our seniors are obviously getting in a work-based learning situation or a capstone situation that's in their certain pathway, and they're out in infield experiences to be able to make that happen. Over the 4 years, this is the first year we've had those capstone kids be able to get out. It's an unbelievable experience for them. But again, I think it all stems back to that transportation situation of just being able to, it's just a logistic nightmare. Somebody's got to start early, somebody's got to start a little bit later. And again, kudos and applaud the board from previous and the board here, the superintendent previous and the superintendent now, to provide the amount of opportunities we're providing for our students. So I would like for people to kind of focus on the amount of positives that are coming out of this rather than maybe one of the negatives that come out of this. And again, in a perfect world, and hopefully if this sat on the backside of the baseball field, kids walk across the parking lot to a thing and they're right back into the junior, senior high school. Just to maximize the opportunities that our kids get in both buildings. They need 5 classes at the junior, senior high school, 3 out here to maximize that, get the transportation taken care of, to get lunches provided, breakfast for all of those kids when they come in here. It's just a difficult situation to have them starting in both places at the same exact time. It would just be very difficult for our transportation department to figure that out over the, again, 2-county situation. And that would require every single bus driver to make 2 drops in the morning. We have 1 drop in the morning, we have 1 pickup in the afternoon, and then we have the 4 shuttles. And again, thank you for allowing us to have that opportunity to happen because it is a unique situation. There are so many people that come to visit our place to see what we're doing because we're outside of the box thinkers, and we're making those things happen for our students. There are more people that come into this building to try to see what we're doing rather than not what we're doing because they want to understand how they can provide those same opportunities for their students and their opportunities so they don't have to ship into a career center that's maybe a county away or 2 counties away. We don't have that situation. All of our kids get to participate in all of our classes in both situations. And again, if we don't have the board, we don't have the leadership from Mr. Bravnik, we don't have the opportunity to do those kind of things. And I appreciate you for allowing us to have that opportunity to do that.
Thank you. Thank you.
Mr. Benedict, there's a layer to that. I think it needs to be spoke to. I appreciate everything you've said and I respect that. But we also have to take into consideration the size of Whitco. We don't have the luxury of having 4 econ teachers, 4 government teachers, 4 U.S. history teachers, 4 geography, math, and so forth. We have 1 in most cases, and lucky 2. And there are a number of classes that run in the mornings that students, especially our C juniors and seniors to get their credits to graduate, have to be in those classrooms because they have other schedules in them, that they have to be in in the afternoon. So that's why you have to balance both ends of that spectrum when you got a smaller school with lesser staff and lesser sections of classes to offer because of that. So it's not just a case of moving Group A out here first thing in the morning, even if we have transportation.
Right.
With the size we are, it'd be virtually impossible for a student to get the courses in in a day that they need to get in for graduation requirement. So, and then balance lunches into that. Master scheduling is a science. It's not something that's easy to do. I commend the work you guys have done with the master scheduling to see that our students get those opportunities with the size of staff that we have here at Whitco to work with.
Correct. There are some situations, you know, obviously, we bring the freshman group out in the morning, we bring the middle school group out in the afternoon to kind of just help alleviate some lunch situations, obviously. First-year students are primarily in the morning, second and third-year students in the afternoon. Again, to speak to your point a little bit in terms of, you know, when we offer AP classes, sometimes there's only 1 section of an AP class. We got to be strategic in where we're putting that class because we want to make sure that every student has the opportunity to do that. If we have situations to where students, you know, I talk to the parents a lot when we talk about scheduling and trying to figure things out. You know, I'm a big Bing Theory guy. I kind of watch that, and it's like if Sheldon walks in our building, we're going to try to make his schedule work as the best we can. We can't say yes to everything, but we can try to be open-minded and try to figure out the best we can to make that schedule work for that particular student so they get everything that they need. Sometimes, again, your older siblings probably took health as a freshman. Your younger siblings now are going to take health as a sophomore, just again to front-load that schedule to get that requirement done that freshman year with the project-based learning. There's a little bit of a trade-off with that, but again, in the 8th-period day, 64 slots. If you want an academic honors diploma, you want a technical honors diploma, it's only 47 credits. There's plenty of time to get it done. It just may be in a different timeframe of what you have and what you do. We do have a lot of our sophomore students that are trying to get AP classes done, and it can't fit in their schedule. They're able to come their junior year, they're able to come that senior year. So we try to provide that experience, and again, with the advent of the Media Center down there, be able to offer the Ivy Tech classes that we offer online. We can have a student taking a class in Bloomington, we can have a kid taking a class in Evansville. That's a synchronous class in our own Media Center so they don't have to have that opportunity where they can't get that Indiana core. We have a tough time finding teachers with that communications side of it in order to get that part of that Indiana core taken care of. So we've mastered that with being able to offer that online. And if that student has a hole in his schedule 6th period at this particular time, they may be taking that same class at Bloomington, another kid may be taking it earlier in the day at Evansville, but they're doing it online in our situation to where they can get that dual-credit. dual credit offered to them. So we've been very flexible, we've been very thinking outside of the box to make it happen. And again, it doesn't happen without your support and Mr. Bravarnik's support. And our students have been outstanding, our transportation department has been outstanding and able to, we provide so many, you know, when we have opportunities for our students coming out with the shuttle buses that come, most of our field trips that we take from the academy are done within that two hours that are here. A lot of our welding situations, we're going to a lot of places that are right here. They don't have to miss class time. That's during their class time. And then they're right back and they're back on that shuttle to go back and get their class eighth period or whatever the case may be. So very fortunate to have a board that's open-minded to allow that kind of stuff to happen for our students and the opportunities that they get. And again, I would just like to again reiterate, focus on the positive things that are coming out of this. I think that's the first and foremost thing that we need to rely on is that the opportunities that we're able to provide our students because of this far outweighs maybe one or two of the negative situations that we have to kind of deal with. But we've made it work. We've absolutely made it work. Yeah.
We're still, we're still developing as a career center.
Sure.
And as a Career Academy.
Correct.
We're working diligently to expand opportunities as Mr. Benedict mentioned for our students. In fact, one good example of that is this year, for the first year, this kitchen is reopened and serving students to open up the possibility of expanded lunchtime. So if a student can create up time, they can come out here and they can have their school lunch and then give them their career classes at different times.
Right.
So it's a work in progress.
That is. That is.
Chris, what would you have us tell people who may be upset that the teachers here don't have students at the beginning of the day and the end of the day so they get two preps and the rest of our teachers do not?
Well, a lot of our, a lot of our teachers are doing their CTSO's time during that time, whether that's a student organization through their particular, whether that's engineering, whether that's soft skills, whether that's career safe, they're doing that prep work during that time. Our teachers, again, in that short amount of time that they're teaching out here, may be teaching six different classes, not English 10 three times. They're teaching six different classes, they're teaching four different, our freshman teachers are teaching four different classes in the morning and two different classes in the afternoon. So they have six different preps that they're prepping for.
So do our elementary teachers, though.
I understand that completely. I understand that completely. You know, as a former math teacher, I didn't, you know, I mean like, you know, I didn't get to wear sweats to school every day because I didn't teach PE. I mean, I mean, that's just part of it. For 10 to 15 years, nothing mattered other than your English score and your math score. And as an Algebra I teacher, I got upset at that calculus teacher that was playing cards in their, in their class for the last, you know, month of the, the month of the year because their test was already done. So then we revamped that and everybody taught algebra. And then it was like, oh my gosh. Wait a minute.
And I think needs to be mentioned that a lot of the staff are working out here on workplace specialist permits.
Right.
It's a whole different animal, if you will, than junior, senior high school or elementary school. It's, it's to try and compare those two like that with alternate scheduling is trying to compare apples and oranges you can. It's alternate scheduling.
Yeah, I mean, it's, you know, again, back in the day, I mean, we have so many specialized programs. FCCL, I mean, F, Family Consumer Science as a teacher, there's not a lot of those that are happening anymore. The old industrial technology teacher that could teach all, there's not, there's nobody going to school to be precision machining teacher, engineering teacher. They're not going to do that. That was all under an umbrella of something else. So now you're going out in the workplace and trying to be specialty people and to teach those classes. They're taking their workplace specialist license through Ball State University to get that pedagogy. But again, it's, those are, they're dwindling, but the specificity of those particular courses that they have to teach requires a certain, obviously, skill set that sometimes we need to kind of look outside the box to find those people to come in and teach those classes. Again, our teachers have their day from 7:35 to 3:15, just like every other teacher in the corporation. Their time is monitored with their CTSO, with their plan time, with their cluster time, with their NIT time, all of that is kind of in that particular schedule that we have out, that's there for every teacher as well.
Thank you.
Awesome. Yep, thank you.
Mr. Mauer is filling in for Mrs. Evans and Mr. Singray tonight, so we'll let him come down and take the podium.
Mr. Mauer's doing double duty and triple with the student of the month.
Good evening, folks. Thanks for having me. I'm going to speak on Mrs. Evans' behalf tonight and also Mr. Singray's night here. Both of them are not feeling well, but I think I'm up for the task. So I'm going to begin the night by talking about assessments. Again, we've talked a little bit about the independent reading level assessment or the ERLA tonight. And just to give you an update on what we're doing at the junior, senior high school, our junior high school students right now are working through that ERLA along with our leadership team. We will have each student completed by the end of this month. Scores, as we are tracking this, as the leadership team is tracking this, the scores are right in tune with our NWEA score. So we are seeing those trends. Along with everything else, administrators are tasked to do, we wanted to take this on and get that training so, one, it can be documented appropriately, that we could see those scores and we could track that data and assess that data as a leadership team, but also helps us build relationships with those students whom we may not know. As an assistant principal, I'd like to say that I know all the students in the building by name. I don't, I'm still working on it. This is another opportunity to build those relationships. So our leadership team is working on that. It's a, it's a wonderful process to identify which students need help and to, at that time when we are assessing them and we are documenting that, to give them some kind of hope, to give them some kind of confidence that there is, there is a plan for you and we are going to work towards improving that, that reading level and that reading assessment. Okay, so moving on, dyslexia testing is completed. Huge thanks to our teachers ensuring that this was finished. Each of the students are receiving Title I intervention along with the students on that watch list. So I did want to note that for tonight's board meeting. Additionally, TIDE is back up and going. All certified teachers will complete their training for TIDE, their TA training, prior to giving any state standardized tests. The required corporation test and security integrity training is now completed and that has been properly documented. Instruction. So we did recently divide up our cluster at the junior, senior high school. So we have the cluster in junior high, senior high, and special education sessions. What this does is this allows us to have smaller teacher groups, work with those teachers more independently, and really helps our differentiation needs and enables us to really build those relationships with those teachers and get to know those specific clusters of students in that body. Cycle one for our formal teacher observations is still in effect at the junior, senior high school until mid-November. Positive points for this, for last week and then moving forward into this week, our football team on Friday recently received an exemplar report that was from the previous Friday, October 13th. This was from an official citing throughout the contest, and these are his words, folks, throughout the contest, the last game of the regular season, when emotions can get a little higher than normal, the players on both sides demonstrated a tremendous amount of sportsmanship. It seemed like every play the players on both sides were helping each other up, giving praise for effort and good plays. Many times I heard good play, great effort, and checking to make sure the other player was okay after the play. This is great news. And again, that was from an official to our football team on October 13th. So sportsmanship's huge, that was, that was much appreciated, especially myself as a former football coach, and it's great to see. Our ranking as one of the best high schools according to U.S. News &amp; World Report is something we want to note for the board meeting, something that definitely we're celebrating at the junior, senior high school. Okay? And lastly, our band finished the season at semi-state this past weekend. I'd like to thank all the parents and supporters who sacrificed their Saturdays and other times in preparation for those performances. Congratulations to Mr. Van Patten and our band for a wonderful season. Upcoming events, this week is Red Ribbon Week. SAD is organizing special events at the schools. The Mobile Dentist is coming on October 31st, 2023. The National FFA Convention is November 1st through the 4th. On November 14th, we are hosting first-year students from Manchester University who are interested in teaching. All juniors will be taking the ASVAB on November 16th. So again, just for documentation purposes, those are some, some dates and some notes of interest. So that concludes the Whitco Junior/Senior High School portion. If it's okay with you, I'll just move right into Mr. Singray's notes for athletics. Okay, thank you. So Mr. Singray's report for facility updates, facility updates, new sound system will be installed in the main gym for the week of October 30th. The program updates go as follows. Upcoming events, Mr. Singray would like to note that fall sports have now been completed. The girls' basketball and wrestling seasons are underway. The girls' basketball scrimmage will be Thursday, October 26th. All schedules and updates can be found on athletic websites and event link for those looking for those times and dates. A note about feeder program updates, youth girls' basketball is competing in the club league on Sunday afternoons. And boys' basketball is hosting a three-week youth league and will go directly into club league season. A big thank you to our Booster Club, thank you for your support and assistance throughout the fall sports season. Big thank you to our student council for facilitating the hospitality tent during the home football games. Another thank you to athletes, parents, and fans for your dedication and support of Whitco Athletics. Few points here of upcoming, upcoming note, the batting cages at the baseball and softball are going to be receiving an update, and the trophy cases at Whitco Junior/Senior High School will be receiving an update. And if you have any questions, Mr. Singray says please reach out to him directly. I think that concludes the notes for both of these. Appreciate your time tonight.
Thank you.
All right.
Our Director of Operations, Rhonda Staveley.
Our Director of Operations, Rhonda Snabley.